Good evening, I'd like to call our meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes. Here.
Clerk Chofeu?
Here.
Trustee Colian? Absent. Trustee Germain?
Here.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Germain. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Call to the public this evening? Anybody to call the public? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Wes Nakagiri. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Gadsden Center. We're a public policy research nonprofit and advocacy group here in Livingston County. I had sent to all board members that I had an email address for, which wasn't everybody, but I had chatted with Supervisor Fountain and I hope that you had a chance to, that he had a chance to send forward our report that we did on Ann Arbor Spark, an organization that you are indirectly doing business with through the Livingston County Economic Development Council. Spark is an organization that I would describe as a venture capital firm. They do venture capital, they invest in companies, startup companies, looking to help small business, high-tech business get a start here in Michigan. Our report summarizes publicly available information that was compiled through internet searches, the tax returns of the organization, Ann Arbor Spark, and some financial audits. And there's some information that I wanted to share via the report, but I just want to touch on a few things in the short time I have tonight. I know that the vote has already been held to allocate the funds. I believe it's $27,000 over three years to Ann Arbor Spark, but I'm asking the board to reconsider in light of the information that we've compiled. Some of the more troubling things was the use of Ann Arbor Spark's use in the past of inflated job creation numbers, which is why Spark is in business, to help create jobs. Their use of inflated numbers is troubling. That Spark serves Livingston County and Washtenaw County, but Washtenaw County gets eight and a half times more benefit than Livingston County. Yes, Washtenaw County contributes 36% more funds, so they do contribute a little bit more, but getting eight and a half percent more for their taxpayers than Livingston, I think we are subsidizing businesses in Washtenaw County. The state of Michigan and the Ann Arbor Ypsilanti Local Development Finance Authority has seen fit to pull funding from Spark. One what happened in 2014, the other is happening now. Other townships in Livingston County, some of them have chosen not to fund Spark. The county board of commissioners has chosen to cut the funding back by one-third. These facts and figures are elaborated in more detail in the report itself. There are links to all of the supporting information. I hope you have a chance to review it and perhaps reopen the discussion on Spark. I appreciate the time. Merry Christmas to all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Wes, is that information in the report, is that the report itself that you were referencing?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody else this evening to call the public? Being none, we'll move on to item number six, which is approval of our consent agenda.
So moved.
Forward.
Motion by Trustee Harper, second by Trustee Petrucci. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item number seven, we need a few resolutions here. One is a resolution for our regular board meetings in 2018. I'll entertain a motion. Is it a resolution? It is.
I'll move to approve the resolution setting the 2018 Heartland Township Board meeting dates.
Support.
There's a motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Harper. Any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Colian, he's absent. Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Clerk Chofeu, yes. Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee Germain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just take a brief second, so Trustee Colian, he can find his chair.
A little late.
That's okay. Just getting started. We're just on item number seven B, which is a resolution for our 2018 sewer and water rates per rate study.
Yes, I've reviewed those.
If there's, entertain a motion for that resolution.
I'll move to approve the resolution setting the rates for water and sewer.
Support.
Had a motion by Clerk Chofeu, second by Trustee Harper. Is there any discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Germain?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee Colian, he's absent. Oh, sorry. Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Clerk Chofeu is yes. Trustee Petrucci?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number C is a resolution. It's a property transfer affidavit penalty waiver, and I'm going to let Treasurer Horning give a brief discussion of what this entails and then entertain a motion for the resolution.
What it is, is when somebody buys a new home and moves to Heartland, they have to come in and file a property affidavit of transfer, and if they don't do it, the township can charge $5 a day. We have never done that practice, and so now the AMAR, part of the assessing audit, they want us to have a resolution saying that we don't do it, so we are just really passing a resolution to our current practices here in the hall. So I will move to approve the resolution waiving property tax transfer affidavit penalties.
Support.
Motion by Treasurer Horning, second by Trustee Germain. Is there any discussion?
How long do they have it? I mean, if they don't file it, and they don't file it within the time period, and it goes on and on and on, and we don't know, we don't have a person that, I mean, the affidavit doesn't demonstrate to the assessor who properly owns the property, doesn't that cause a problem? And shouldn't there be a penalty associated with that?
No.
I think the public needs to know.
No, because the property transfer really happens when we get the deed from the county. This is just a formality of, you want to say something.
That is a check that helps us that we get those deeds that are newly recorded.
But you don't always get a copy of the deed.
We don't always.
And you don't know when the transfer is going to take place. The purpose of the affidavit is to ensure that, one, that the assessor knows what the cost of the value of the property that's been transferred, and it's designed to make sure that when the capping takes place, it has to uncap if it's a new owner, and if this isn't filed within the time period, I think the penalty is weak anyway. I mean, $5 is terrible. It should be a lot higher than that.
A day. $5 a day.
$5 a day. I don't think we should be waiving this, and I'm not going to vote in favor of it. I think this is the one responsibility that as a citizen, you have an obligation to do under the law.
If I may, these are important points that are being made. As the assessor noted, our compliance rate is 99%. And again, there are certain situations where we may not get a deed. Eventually, it comes around. If somebody's delinquent on their taxes because improperly notified of who the owner record is, eventually we will find it out, so we have a pretty good handle on what our compliance rate is. And so, from staff's perspective, the nominal fee or penalty would not improve that compliance of any significance. For residential property, it's $5 a day up to a maximum of $200. Whether or not that incentivizes compliance is a fair question. For commercial and industrial property, it's $20 a day up to $1,000. Another thing that had been looked at is we are, most communities do waive this, including within the county. There are communities that do enforce this, and they enforce this strictly, so it's up to the board how, what policy stance you'd like to take.
But Jim did note that last year we had 100% compliance, and in the past, our rate is about 99%.
And that may be. My point is, is that we're in the midst of a lot of changes in our township, especially with new residences coming in. That affidavit is an important document. There's time limits by which you're supposed to file that document to ensure that the proper records are updated when they're supposed to be updated. That is the purpose of it. It's designed to make sure that the assessor has the value of the property. It's supposed to be, I mean, you swear to, in that affidavit, you swear that you've accepted the property at the value that it's been sold at, and that is, that can be used if it's not an arm's-length transaction. There are a lot of legal ramifications with respect to that affidavit, and I get it, yeah. You might have 90% compliance, but there's a reason why there's a penalty attached for not filing it on time. I mean, we got to file our taxes on time. Were you going to waive the penalties if I don't file my taxes on time?
I can't, but they can do. You can waive this penalty.
I know. My point is, is that, you know, as the treasurer, I find it kind of interesting that we're going to waive a penalty for somebody that's supposed to comply with the law, and we have to comply with the law, that's what the law. When are we going to, are we not going to, is that the way we're going to, now, we're not, we just figure out what laws we're going to follow and not follow?
This is part of the law.
It is part of the law.
Part of the law is to waive it.
Part of the law permits a waiver.
Well, I know.
So that's part of the law.
Correct.
But my point is, the person that has to file the penalty, it should be filed.
Can I ask you a question, either one of us?
Sure.
If, let's say, somebody's negligent, and it goes six months, goes a year, let's say it goes three years, and then it gets caught up, does the assessor, can we get the back taxes?
Yeah, you go to the board.
Plus penalty, plus interest.
But I believe it's, there's a limit in terms of our back you can go as it relates to somebody that has been uncapped.
I think it's only two years.
It's only two years.
It might be three, but I think it's maybe only two.
Yeah, there would be a limit to it. Again, there would be, other actions would take place, and then it becomes a question of whether you think that potential $200 fine would make a difference in their compliance to that risk. These are all good points.
I would say the 1% that doesn't comply, probably 90% of our certificates are filed through the closing papers, and they come from the real estate or the title company. They don't even come from the resident. They just sign them in their stack of papers at closing. The one person that may not comply probably didn't know about it when they weren't sent in, or it was a mistake by their title company, so it's really hard to say, "Welcome to Heartland, here's a $200 fine."
Well, yeah, but I've been in many, many closings with title companies, and they always tell you, "Make sure you get it filed."
Most of them send it. Most of the title companies do it for you. When I get, we get assessment payoffs, we get utility bill payoffs, we get tax payoffs, all from the title company, and that transfer affidavit is right in with it.
So this is typically something that does happen at the real estate agent when you're closing?
Yeah.
Not everybody, not everybody goes through a real estate agent, and in fact, if you haven't heard recently, right now, the trouble is, most of the sales are going cash sales now. I mean, that was just reported. So what happens is, these documents aren't, not all the documents that typically people would go through are filed the way they should, and they're always, and they don't use a lawyer. They don't always use a lawyer, they don't always use a real estate title company and everything, anything else, so you guys can decide what you want to do. I just think that, you know, I think it's silly to even have a penalty if it can be waived in the first place. The purpose of the penalty is to ensure compliance. The penalty should probably be higher than ensure compliance. This is an important document, by the way. This is probably, next to the deed, this affidavit is the most important document, because that puts, it informs the local assessor with the value of the property that's been transferred, how much you paid for it. It's also the document that, if you're a church or something, that you have to file to determine whether you're exempt from taxation. It adds cost to our staff if it's not been filed on time. So if this was property that was exempt from taxation, and the assessor has to go back, and now has assessed the property and never exempted it, now you got to deal with that at board review, you got to deal. The purpose of this is to make sure that the records are properly maintained and kept up to date, and there should be a penalty attached to it. I quite frankly think the statute's wrong, it should be a lot higher, but I've said that.
So when do these people typically come in and pay their bill?
Well, the sewer bills get paid every quarter.
I'm talking, if you, through this thing right here, when would somebody come in after they get the notice?
Most people walk up to the assessing counter the day of their closing.
Right.
If they're charged. They walk in, so-and-so told me to bring this in. I don't know what this is, but here it is.
And they're setting up their utility bill, ACH, and all kinds of things.
Okay, so those that are getting, now getting a $5 a day, how are they receiving it, and how long do they usually come in?
They're potentially not using a title company or some sort of closing agent to help walk them through all the requirements they need to do.
So how are they notified that this is something that they're supposed to do?
Well, it's implied, kind of, that you're supposed to know, that if you're, that they're certain, you better look, if you're going to do a closing yourself or have some sort of transaction amongst friends or family, that you, you know, know what statutes you have to comply with, and it's always recommended that they use a professional provider to help them comply with all those laws.
Well, I'm actually surprised that the state of Michigan allows anything to be waived, as to a fee. I'm surprised they let you even opt out of it. Who gets, who collects the money? We collect it and give it to them, to the state?
It stays with us, I believe, is that?
We've never collected it.
We've never collected it, but...
So if we've never collected it, just trying to understand, why are we acting on something that we've never collected?
Because now it's included in the audit. Whether, if you waive it, you need this resolution. You don't.
And technically, by the statute, the statute itself says, if you can waive it, the local unit may waive it by a resolution of the board. You may have passed a resolution years ago, we just don't know about it, but that was the practice when I came here, was, so we just want to have a record of it, so for the audit.
I'm just trying to get my head around this. We've never actually collected $5 from anybody.
No. This issue actually came up in my first year here with Supervisor Rhodes and the assessor. There was a discussion, and even at the administrative committee level, there was some brief discussion on this, of, there was a question, we weren't collecting it, should be to collect it, it didn't, and there was a very brief discussion, I believe even, might have come to the board at the time, this would have been 10 years ago, that, you know, there was not a desire to do it at that time, so we left it as is.
So the reason that we're doing it, again, is because now we're getting, is it's part of some type of a form?
It's on the checklist for the audit, for the assessing audit.
And technically, if, as long as we've been waiving it historically, there should have been by resolution, a policy by resolution according to the statute.
And it may have.
And again, there may have been one.
We just...
We just don't have record of it.
Motion's on the table.
Any other questions? So the motion is to, it's a resolution, right?
Right.
In favor of the property transfer affidavit penalty waiver. If there's no other questions, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Clerk Chofeu, yes. Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Trustee Petrucci?
No.
Trustee Colian?
No.
Supervisor Fountain?
No.
Trustee Germain?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Okay. Seven D is park amenities. Mr. West?
Good evening. Good evening. What you have before you this evening is a proposal for the park amenities, which will be the last purchase to wrap up our 2017 park improvement projects. The amenities are going to be purchased through a pre-bid service through government purchasing alliance through U.S. Communities. The pricing is very competitive, and the quantity that we are proposing is actually, we get an additional discount for that. Essentially, it includes 22 picnic tables, eight benches, and eight trash cans with the rain guard lids, similar to, or basically identical to the existing park amenities that are within Heritage Park and Sellers Park at this time. We do, we were able to receive an additional quantity discount, which has permitted us for essentially the same dollar amount to also include some additional picnic tables for Springer Fields. Currently, the picnic tables that are out there require annual maintenance, including up to being fully rebuilt. Two years ago, we've actually had to order new wood and rebuild some of those picnic tables, and essentially what we'd like to do is propose to move those wooden picnic tables over to Heritage for the bonfire pits for the Winterfest program, and essentially phase those out rather than repair them in the future. Again, what you have before you is for the purchase and installation of all those park amenities with freight, and for just over $38,000. I'll be happy to answer any questions concerning these park amenities.
Just quickly, where are the eight in-ground benches going to be going?
Essentially, the benches are proposed to be around the playscape area.
Oh, okay.
Around the perimeter, especially at Sellers Park. It's a much larger perimeter than at Heritage Park, but that's where we are proposing those for park patrons that may not want to take shelter directly under the pavilion, given the distance to the far side, or the pavilion in relation to the far side of the playscape.
So they're installing them?
They are installing them.
Okay.
Same company that also, we purchased from before, and they installed them before.
And I understand that you want to remain consistent, but have we, what was the process for determining whether these amenities were priced in a manner that?
I'm sorry?
The amenities themselves?
Yes.
Spending a significant amount of money, what it was done to determine whether or not the number, and whether or not there are other companies that bid on it or?
We did competitively shop them amongst different companies, including the quantities. We did this historically with the past amenities that we installed two years ago within the parks. The specific models that were selected are actually the, probably fall to the entry level or economy model, although it seems like it is a significant amount of money for park, as far as park amenities go. This is, they're certainly higher-priced amenities, I'll phrase it that way. These are the most durable. They are the steel with PVC coating on them. They don't collect water. It's basically expanded metal. They shed the snow. We have competitively shopped the same particular feature. In fact, there's multiple companies that sell the same brand, and through this U.S. Government Purchasing Alliance, we were able to secure the best pricing. We even reached out to our other vendors to say, "Is it possible to match this?" And then they said, "We really can't touch that particular purchasing agreement."
And so for the people up at home, what is the U.S. Community Government Purchase Alliance? Is that sort of a, you know, a joint pulling or a joint?
Yes, absolutely.
Larger purchasing power?
Yes, and it's basically, it's a national kind of purchase for all park amenities across the country. The state of Michigan does participate in that program, and also extends that pricing down to even the local form of government, including townships of our size and nature. So we are privileged to be able to participate in this particular program, and additionally, you had mentioned, I wanted to address, the quantities were actually recommended by the Park Site Plan Committee, so that's where the number of these particular features were recommended by.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions?
I have a question with regards to the picnic tables.
Yes.
At $920 a table, are they made out of gold or what? I mean, I mean, isn't that a little steep for a picnic table? I mean, I, what?
It's not, actually. Again, that is the economy model. You can actually, there's picnic tables, well, in excess of $2,500 each, when you get into the commercial-grade picnic or park amenities.
I haven't bought a picnic table in a long time, but it just seems like a lot of money for a picnic table.
And again, this is a commercial-grade picnic table. This is not comparable to what you would buy for your home or residential purposes. This is designed to be resistant to vandalism. It is designed to support excess weight for, how shall I say, uses it was not intended for. More for, I will tell you, there's going to be wheeled apparatus that people are going to try and ride on them. They are designed to sustain it.
They're going to try to steal them at $1,000 a picnic table.
Well, there is another advantage to the steel. They are quite heavy, so, and quite frankly, we do plan on bolting down the trash cans and...
You just need to explain to me a little further why we need such an expensive picnic table. Is there a good warranty on it? Why are they?
Well...
Quite frankly, it's...
Are they ADA compliant?
They are ADA compliant. They are the low end of the commercial. We can certainly resort to a lower grade in material if that's the desire of the board. It will not match our existing amenities. However, that was our goal, to match the existing amenities, and again, these are recommendations by the Park Site Plan Committee.
Yeah, and the life cycle, maintenance, and aesthetic of it.
And that's what I need to hear. Is the life cycle longer for these?
Oh, by far, yeah, yeah.
Meaning it's better for these?
If you're doing a do-it-yourself home kit or any of those types of things that you might buy for residential, they will not last in this environment, and we will be replacing them quite often. So not only the cost of the replacement, but the labor tends to overlook a, to oversee a picnic table replacement program manually.
And since I've come on, I...
And we've been doing that at Springer Field. That's exactly what's been happening.
Those were made at my end, Boyce Town.
Right, and those are, those are even a little on the higher end of a residential picnic table, if you will.
Yes, so Springer Field are the, basically your very entry-level wooden bench. The problem is the wood deteriorates over time, even though it has galvanized steel tubing for the legs and whatnot. Public Works has replaced multiple boards on those, and they generally require, we go through and inspect each picnic table and repair them as needed prior to being transferred over for Winterfest. So the recommendation would be not to go with the wood. They tend to get vandalized much easier. They have multiple names on them, and the picnic tables that we are proposing are pretty much vandal, the most vandal-resistant coating you can get while still remaining economical.
I did go out and look at several playground equipment sites, because I thought the price was extremely high, but everything I saw was of this quality was over $1,200.
And that is also with the assembly and installation as well.
Does the same thing hold true for the benches?
Yes. And, you know, commercial amenities, there's not a whole lot cheap. They're certainly a different grade, which obviously we've seen with the construction of the pavilion. It's a lot more expensive than if you were to build a pavilion in your backyard, so.
But they are heavy-duty and...
Absolutely.
You need that.
Absolutely.
Speaking as a member of the Park Site Plan Committee...
Speaking as a member of the Park Site Plan Committee, I think that one of the things that we discussed when we were coming up with this recommendation was that we have invested so heavily in constructing high-quality bat restrooms and pavilions, that to go in with a economical table which would have a short lifespan, would just, they're not consistent. And we felt that by getting something on the more expensive side, if I can use that word, the residents are going to recognize it as not junk and treat it more carefully. So that's kind of our logic. Doesn't mean it's going to hold true, but it's just like picking a daycare facility. You're going to be more apt to go to one that, you go in there and it's neat and clean and tidy. People are going to maintain our parks and use them frequently. Having respect for the property that's there would be important.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Not yet.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the formal purchasing agreement and necessary budget amendments corresponding to each park fund.
I'll support it.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Colani. Is there any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Move on to number eight, which is board reports. We start tonight with trustee Petrusi.
I don't have any report tonight.
Clerk Chofeu?
No report.
Treasurer Horning?
Since we will be closed for the holidays, anybody that pays their taxes the first day that we come back, if they'd like them to be put in for December 31st, we will accommodate the residents that, you know, can't make it in, in the short frame that we are open. Merry Christmas to everybody.
So they're, you're closed. We're closed next week, all next week?
Is that it? Trustee Colani?
Cap, I'm sorry. So could they just drop it into the box?
Yes, we do have a box out front you can drop it in, and you can also pay them over at First National Bank.
So as long as they're in there by the 2nd of January?
That's right.
They'll be credited for...
If they date their check December 31st, we will credit it for that.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any similar opportunity for those who wish to buy water or sewer REUs before the rates go up? I mean, is it their fault that the township chooses to close four, three days between Christmas and New Year's?
If somebody were to drop a check in the drop box for them out of an REU, they'd get an REU.
Well, the rates don't...
They'd make great stocking stuffers.
Don't the rates have to go into effect, be publicized first and all that?
They don't have to be publicized, no.
Oh, they don't? Okay.
Trustee Colani?
I have nothing to report.
Trustee Jermaine?
Nothing.
Trustee Harper?
No report.
I gave a quick presentation this morning to the chamber, and it, they looked, they said that maybe there was some activity down here on Clark Road with MDOT. They were doing some, have we heard anything on the potential discussion of a light down here?
MDOT is doing light studies at M-59 intersections of Clark Road, Cullen Road, and Hacker Road. And I don't think that probably all of those would be, would meet the warrants for light, but it's too early to say.
Did they give us any timeline when they might...
Those take a couple of months to do, so...
I think we just want to make sure that, maybe that's in your report, just if you hear anything.
Sure, yeah.
Get that out. That's all I have right now. We'll take a brief recess unless there's anything else from the board. Take a brief recess, and then we'll go into our work session.